Just started recording.
Good evening. I'd like to call this town council work session to order for this evening. We've got really public hearings as the bulk of the agenda for this evening. So let's do the roll call and get going. Marjorie Austin?
Here.
Beth Justice?
Here.
Larry Tuning?
Here.
I am here. Sandy Sturgill? All right. Mary Hansen and Alana Courtney are not here. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? We'll take a vote. Marjorie?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
I say yes. Sandy? First item is the boundary line adjustment. As you are probably aware, the boundary line for the town of Urbana... Excuse me?
There is no such thing as turning the mic up.
We don't have a PA system.
It's either on or off.
There's a seat right here.
There's one chair up here.
Sorry, I'll try to speak a little louder. So the town of Urbana had the opportunity to expand its borders to the edge of this property and to incorporate the lots that include the HRSD Waste Management System and the town well lots and town tower, as well as the firehouse. And the Hall family asked to come in with that as well. The county has approved that. The paperwork is completed. And this is a public hearing looking for comments on whether or not to do that. It is the feeling of the council, because we went through this process, that we should do it. And that's our recommendation is for approval. So at this point, I guess, public comment?
Open the public hearing.
And the public hearing?
There's a gentleman in the back who raised his hand.
Tammy.
Tammy.
Okay. I can't read.
Hello? Good evening. I'll keep it short. Mayor Roger Putney, 36 Middle Lane, Urbana, Virginia.
Okay.
Spoken in front of you guys before. I didn't speak last night at the courthouse, but I want to speak tonight. I'm in favor of this. I think it's a good idea to go ahead and incorporate the surrounding parcels, as long as there is no grievances from the other neighbors. Tax benefit for those that not necessarily live in town, but do have real estate in town. Hopefully, it'll kind of even things out and we can get a little more money into the town. Just spend it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Mr. Putney is the only one that signed up for public comment. Now it's a motion, correct?
Is there anybody else that...
Anyone else?
Now close the public.
Having no other public comment, I move to close the public comment. And do I have a motion to go forward with the boundary line adjustment?
I'll make a motion to approve the voluntary boundary line adjustment agreement between Middlesex County and the town of Urbana as presented.
Second?
A second.
Mr. Sturgill, seconds. Any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say, this is the second time in the history of our town we incorporated 1902. And we had a boundary line adjustment in 1983, which brought in the point, which is down where Queen Anne's Cove is. So this is nothing that we haven't done before. We're not annexing anything. We're just moving the boundary lines.
Thank you, Larry.
Any other discussion? Let's have a vote. Marjorie?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
I say yes. Sandy? Motion passes. What is that, five zip? The next item on the agenda is an adjustment of water rates. As most of you are aware, the town was mandated to build two new wells. The first one has to be done by this fall. It's on the way to completion and we will meet that deadline. Within the next eight years, we're going to need another well. This is mandated by DEQ. It's not our choice. Things may change at that point, but we'll have two good wells up on the hill. We also have identified with a survey that we did a couple of years ago through AH Environmental, infrastructure upgrade needs that this town needs because it has sort of languished over the time. There are parts of Virginia Street, for example, that I'm told are more patches than they are original line. And the guesstimate in at that point, $2020, I think, was about $7.1 or $7.3 million that we're going to have to use to keep this place in shape. There are also areas of the town where larger lines go to smaller lines and then back up to larger lines, which plays havoc with water for fire abatement and things like that. And so we have a need for hydrants in multiple locations and we need to have the adequate water to get to those. That all being said, we're trying to creep up on the rates so that... Because in doing those things, sometimes we can get grants and we have an application in for a Virginia Department of Health grant currently to try to do some of that infrastructure. A lot of these grants are money that we pay upfront and we get reimbursement for some or all of it. So we need to have some cash in the bank to do that. And another thing that needs to be said is that currently, for example, in Middlesex County, in a two-month period, they're paying $90 for 6,000 gallons. The new rate for us in town would be $45 for 6,000 gallons. And so we're way ahead of the game with respect to that and just trying to meet the needs and develop a plan and fiscal responsibility going forward so that we will have the ability to make those infrastructure upgrades and not allow this place to continue to degrade. That being said, the current rate for... The minimum rate for 6,000 gallons is $43.07. The proposed rate, which is a 5% increase, is $45.22. Above 6,000 gallons, it was $4 for 1,000 gallons over 6,000. It's now going to be $4.20 for every 1,000 gallons over. Another part of the story is there were certain amounts... Certain avenues of funding that would have been available to us, but our out-of-town rates are significantly higher. They were twice what the in-town rates were. And some of the grants and funding possibilities that are available aren't available if your out-of-town rates are more than one and a half times the in-town rate. That being said, we have, in this ordinance, left the out-of-town rates at $83... Well, it's not on the sheet, but it's roughly $83 for the first 6,000 gallons and $8 for every 1,000 gallons over. Again, that's still a deal for them compared to Middlesex Water Authority, which is 90 for 6,000 and $10 for every 1,000 gallons over. And so we don't want to push them out of the system or make it advantageous. We still want it to be a good deal for everybody, basically, but we do want to, over time, close that gap. The minimum amounts to a dollar a month in terms of the increase in the ordinance. And that's what the recommendation is by the Water Committee for the reasons I just enumerated. So that being said, I'll open this for public comment. All right. Becky Nordstrom?
Mr. Mayor, that's the list for the Hall ordinance.
Oh, okay. So it's not... Do we have anyone that's got a comment for the water rates? All right. I'll close public comments for the water rate. I now at least have the sheet here for the Marina. Do I have a motion to accept the water rates as proposed?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 20...
Mayor, these are all in one ordinance, 23-02.
Oh, okay.
So we want to accept comments on the whole thing and then vote on it.
All right. Then I'll move on to a spiel. And if any of you want to help me out with this, that's fine, too. But in going to the Marina, we try to keep our... We realize it's a public structure. We want to be fair about the rates. And we want the town to have the benefit of some of those things, which is why if you are in the town limits, there's no charge for the boat ramp. And we want to keep that. We also want to make sure that we're charging what is a fair and competitive rate with other peoples around. We've looked around and, for example, when it comes to some of the rates... I know I looked at the municipality that I found that has a town Marina was an Ancoch. And they're charging $2.50 a foot per night and $7.50 for a 30-amp feed for overnight and $15 for a 50-amp feed overnight, where historically we haven't charged anything for electricity, even for long-term residents. There are other places that we looked at for the rates that we had. We were charging $1.75 per foot for transient guests. Nobody I could find... I'm not saying it's not out there, but nobody I could find was charging less than $2. And that was the direction we were moving, was $2 a foot. We did go up roughly 10%... Well, it ends up being, what was it, Roy, like 14% on the longer-term rates? And had proposed a charge for those people that are actually using electricity. The Marina currently uses about $1,000 a month is what the electric bill is. And it's difficult with one account to know exactly who is doing what, but the building isn't that big and its uses aren't that great. So we're trying to make it so that we're not losing money to the use of electricity. Does anybody else have anything to say about that?
No. I think the electric part, like you said, it'd be hard to break it down because we don't have any meters out there. But when people come and say long-term, they really should pay a lot of stuff.
Someone had sent an email with a proposal. They may be speaking here this evening about an inline meter for the 30-amp circuit that was reasonably priced. It was roughly about $500. The company that makes those in researching that, they don't make a 50-amp. So we still have the question of what to do with the people using 50 amps. And I didn't find one that was out there for that that was reasonable. We had looked into stanchions to replace those so that we could have a central feed and monitor what was going on. And the cost of that was, was it $10,000? Which would take us quite a while to pay back. We also, down at the Marina, have plans to do infrastructure upgrades down there. By first phase, after we correct some of the problems that are already there, is to put floating docks on the north side so that we are more friendly for smaller craft. Because right now, if you don't bring a step ladder with you and don't time it right with the tides, you're not either getting off your boat or getting back on. And we need to fix that, especially for the transient population. And so the goal there is, yes, we did make money, but we need to have, again, boating infrastructure grants are... We have to pay the money out front and then we get 75 cents on a dollar back. But we have to have the money there to actually make the investment before it comes back. So we need a, basically, a sitting fund of reserve to do these improvements as time goes on. And as a result, we need to have the cash flow to get that done. We also need to have funds available for any emergencies of repairs that need to be made that were greater than or anticipated. So that being said, that's the reason we've made the suggestion to increase the rates as proposed in the ordinance. And now, if no one else has anything to say, I will open it to public comment.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I say something?
Well, are you on the list?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Yeah, you can come to... I'll call you up in the order that you're on the list.
Okay, so I'll wait till you call me.
Yes. Yep. Becky Nordstrom?
Hi. My husband, Robert, and I have spent our summers typically from June through September at the Urbana Town Marina for 11 years. Originally, our monthly slip rental was $300. This included cable TV, Wi-Fi, electric, water, access to our beautiful, clean showers, and coin-operated laundry. In 2021, our monthly slip fee went up to $350 and the cable TV went away. Told we didn't need it. But the other amenities, if we can call them that, stayed the same. Now, two years later, you propose not only to increase our monthly rate to $400, which to me is very reasonable, but in addition to that, charge a flat electric rate of $50 or $100. In our case, $100. Would it not be more feasible to meter the electric and pay for only what we use? I realize changing to a metered system is going to cost the Marina initially, but it should pay for itself over time. And perhaps the metered system could be paid for with grant money. I realize you have to pay it upfront, but it should come back. Has this option even been looked into? Is the Marina not profitable at all? According to the article that I read in The Sentinel, the Marina shows a revenue of $60,350. Of great interest to me is that the expenses are exactly the same amount as the income to the dollar. And I don't understand about corporate accounting or government accounting. And correct me if I'm wrong, because I may be, but I understand that $13,500 under the improvements in the expense columns were from grant money. Again, this may be an upfront expense for the Marina, but when those funds are reimbursed, perhaps that $13,500 could go to pay for metered electric on the pedestals. I can assure you, voters talk, good, bad, ugly. My husband and I have recommended Urbana Town Marina to dozens of fellow voters. But if this proposal goes forward, that will probably no longer be the case. We've stayed in Marinas from the coast of Virginia all the way down to the Florida Keys. Most Marinas in the $500 a month category offer numerous amenities, none of which Urbana Town Marina does. Not that we want them. We love the town Marina.
Thank you. Joyce Seens?
Hi. My only concern was with the rates, the monthly rates that we were going to be charging. And I just felt like they were a little bit too high. And then earlier, Garth did tell me that we would have the ability to determine who pays what because not every boat down there is created equally. We have small boats who just have a trickle charge for their bilge pumps, up to the big hatteras who is running 250 amps. So I think we need to study that and reconsider that rate and, again, come up with a daily rate similar to a Ancoch. 750 on a daily rate for 30 amps and $10 maybe for 50 amps. And that's all I need to say.
So you're talking about the electric rate, not the slip rates? Is that what you're...
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that 750 a month?
No, daily.
No, they were 750 a night, which that figures out to $225 a month.
Right, if they were to stay. But of course, we have a monthly rate, which y'all have proposed $50 a month for 30-amp, $100 a month for 50. And it really shouldn't cost that much, in my opinion.
Okay.
Do you know what was on Ancoch? What did you say was?
I didn't quote that.
That was me.
Yes.
They didn't have a breakdown for any kind of monthly rate. It looked like they were transient only, and I don't know that.
So no charge?
What's that? Yeah, they only have daily rates, yeah.
So they don't charge?
That's all they have published.
Do they have residential... I mean, do they have people stay there for a long time?
I don't know.
No. They don't? Daily rates.
Jim Monk?
Thank you, Joyce.
Good evening. I'm Jim Monk. I've been at the town Marina, the Marina, for 28 years. I mentioned the meter maid, power meters, in my quote. They're 30-amp meters. But from what I'm seeing at the Marina, a lot of the boaters that have the 50-amp cord actually split it up and go into their boats with 30-amp cords. So it would take two... It would take two of those power meters, meter maids, for those boats. But that would work. So, yeah, I've been in the town Marina, the Marina, for 28 years. When I came into the Marina in 1995, the slip rate was $100 a month. Well, that $100 in 1995 is like $200 today. That's what inflation did for us. So at the present rate of $2,800 per year, that's what I'm paying, that's $233 a month, which is not a lot more than the $200 a month. But with the proposed rate increase, I'd be paying $316 a month, which is a heck of a lot more than inflation. So I'll just say it upfront. I think that this proposed increase is onerous. So I posted this last night on what's happening in Urbana. Boaters writing to mutiny at town Marina over exorbitant new fees. The new budget for 2022, 2023 would increase the yearly slip rental fee from $2,800 to $3,200. That's for me. In addition, a new fee of $50 or $100 electricity charge is proposed. The $400 yearly slip rental added to the new $600, $1,200 yearly electricity charge would cause slipholders $3,800 or $4,400. That's a 36% to a 57% increase in the cost to keep the boat in the town Marina without any increase in service.
30 seconds remaining.
Okay, well, let me go. I would suggest that the town surplus of over $20,000 be used to buy the town to buy meter maids for the 14 permanent slips. So, okay, here's the lowdown. Nobody in the town Marina votes in Urbana. We're all from out of town. We need our friends in the community to support us in opposing these unjustified fee increases. Who's in the Marina, anyway? Well, for the most part, it's the sole retired folks on old boats. We're not rich. We're leaving on fixed incomes.
Thank you, sir. And I can't read the last name. Jim?
Denninger.
Okay.
Sir, how do you spell your last name?
Denninger. First letter's a D.
I've been sailing out of Urbana Creek for about 32 years now. Most of it has been in what's traditionally called the Bridge Marina. And so I have a very good idea of what the rates are over there. There are really only two non-privately owned fixed docks on this side of the creek. The town dock and the one next to the bridge. The rates down there are something in the neighborhood of maybe $2,200 a year. And I recently moved to the town dock about a year or so ago and it cost me an extra $500 to move up to the town dock. So instead of comparing us to something like an Ancoch, I just compared us to what's in the creek, what's available to people here because we have to go somewhere. If all of this goes through, my rates are going to jump to $4,400 a year. And again, I very much support Mr. Monk's idea of metering them. It is feasible. On mine, I do use the 50-amp even though I have a small boat. And I split it to 230s and I could easily have 230 meters there. So it should work okay. I highly recommend that. I think that it's only fair. Some people are running five air conditioners during the summer and five heaters during the winter. Some of us, like myself, I unplug when I'm not on the boat. When I'm not in town, I'm not using any electricity. November, December, January, February, March, and half of April, I'm not down at the boat at all. It's completely unplugged. I don't want to pay $100 a month. I mean, that's absurd. So anyway, most of what I wanted to say has already been said. I just wanted to get a couple of digs in and hopefully they're reasonable.
Anyone else for public comment?
No.
Well, in the back. No. Is there a second? Oh, it was printed. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Vijay Malor Vijay. And I have a HCB-C 24-foot helms. And that does not even have electricity. Only about two weeks ago, I got the electricity. And I come here like once in two weeks or once in four weeks and then I spend hardly about two, three hours and meet my friends and go back. I do not see how it is justified if they charge me also $50 a month. I don't mind paying depending on how much I use. So I think you've got to come to some kind of an arrangement for that, sir.
Yeah, that rate would only be on the longer-term people. A transient person wouldn't pay...
I'm not a transient person. I've been here.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. So like I said, for two years, I never had even electricity in my boat. And now I'm planning to spend a little bit more time because I write books. So I wanted to stay in the boat. And I got the electricity only two weeks ago. And it has not been switched on also yet. So I wanted to just make this point for all of you to consider. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dan Snead? I figured you were going to say something, but...
Oh, I wasn't going to let you off.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I apologize.
I'm Dan Snead. Been living here for 37 years. And also, I work at the town Marina. But I'm here with a lot of my friends from the Marina who I work for. What I want to bring up, they've already mentioned, the increase in slip fees... Okay, that's going to come out to about $33 a month. That's bearable. What's not bearable is $100 for somebody that has a 50-amp plug. And what this means, you're going to pay if you're plugged into that 50, even though you might be running a trickle charger or a little refrigerator on your boat. So we've got to come up with a way to measure that. There are ways to measure that. There are kilowatt meters on those old docking stations. Now, I've looked at some of them. Of course, now the docking stations are 21 years old, right? And of course, now the docking stations are 21 years old, right? When we rebuilt the Marina, okay? We can redo the electrical, it's the kilowatt readers on those stations. The parts are about $690. There are some other options that are cheaper, but I'm not sure how good they would stand up. This is quoted from dock boxes, the people that make the docking stations. And if we've got boats that need to be plugged in 50-amp year-round, we need to get in a position where we can measure their kilowatt hours, and at the end of the month, we can give them a bill and say, "Your electric bill is this amount." Then we won't have all this fussing about, "I'm paying $100. He don't need to pay but $10." We need to back off on this electric charge until we can get it straight. We've got quotes on the upgrades. I did get a quote on the new docking stations. If we did all 16 docking stations, it's $32,000. So I think we want to look at maybe doing a repair unless we're getting new docks real soon.
How many stations are there?
30 seconds remaining.
We got 16, and that serves two slips.
Right.
So you've got 30 amps on one side, 50 on the other.
Okay.
So I'm suggesting that if we need to go with the rate increase, work on that. Leave this electric off until we get straight and know what we're doing.
Okay.
I've talked to other Marinas, and I know how some of this works. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Anyone else in the public?
Can I say something else, sir?
Quick.
We really don't know what yearly rates are over at...
You need to speak.
Yeah. We really don't know what the rates, the yearly rate, is at Onandcock or Cape Charles. They're similar marinas. Those numbers are available. I don't have them, and you don't have them. But I think we need to look at those numbers before we raise the rates. I just can't believe they're as high as we're proposing the rates here to be.
Okay, thank you. After hearing this, I think my suggestion would be to follow what Mr. Snead said and take the electricity rates out of the ordinance until we get...
Are you done with public comment?
Oh, but anybody else? I'll close public comment.
I would like to just add some facts for you.
Okay.
I did a little quick, you know, Internet's a wonderful thing. Yes, Robert Nordstrom.
Okay, thank you.
My wife Becky spoke earlier. So this afternoon, I work on the Internet all day long, every day, no problem. So I looked, and apparently the residents pay about 11 cents per kilowatt hour, and commercial properties pay somewhere around 7 cents per kilowatt hour. I assume that the Town Marina falls in the commercial section. So if you do the math on that, a 30-amp cord is only capable of 3.6 kilowatts. That's the max you can get out of it per hour, okay? I would have to run my air conditioner, and I do have a 50, I do have two 30-amp services. I would have to run my air conditioner all the time, 24/7, to get to the price that you're talking about. So you're ranking me at 7.2 kilowatts per hour, 24/7. Your homes, most of your homes are 200-amp. I'm at 60, okay? And tell me what your house electric bill is. I guarantee you, it's not $200 for half the electricity that you're using. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm not on the list. Can you talk if you're not on the list?
Yes.
All right. I'm Johnny Robinson, and I've been at the Marina for years and like it. Weekends only, weekends. I do not mind having my own meter. I was, up until two years ago, I was across the way at the floating docks, and I had my own meter. My bill was never over $38 a month, never. And that was running heaters and running as much as I could run. So again, just to support what everybody else has said, we're way off base with what you all are proposing. So that's all I've got to say.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, can I say what we're thinking?
No.
Can we put off?
You've had two bites of the apple. I appreciate your zeal.
But you're getting ready to give them what they want.
Exactly. Exactly.
Yeah.
Based on this discussion, it would be my recommendation that we knock off the electric charges and just do the rate increases and allow the rate increase... What's... Oh, public comment is closed.
Look, hearing.
Yes. But you know what I'm going to say here, is that we knock off the metered, until we can get a metered system and understand what the true costs are, that we pass the ordinance with no electric charge so that the rates go up this amount that's in the ordinance and the electricity is still included in what we're doing. That's the proposal. Do I have an amendment or a motion to...
We have to motion to amend.
A motion...
Before you guys get ready to make a motion, you're going to vote on the whole ordinance.
Yes.
If there are other changes, they should all be stated at the same time.
Right.
I have no issue with the water ordinance.
No.
And I didn't hear much in the public comment that would...
No.
...change that. I think we heard plenty to amend the ordinance for the Marina and that we should make an amendment to discard the electricity charges for the rate proposal in the Marina rates.
That can be made all in one motion, though?
Yes. You ready to go, Marjorie?
Okay, so I'll move to approve the ordinance number 2023-2 without the proposed electrical rate increase.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. Do we have discussion on council?
I think that everything we've heard today from these people, good advice, I think you really need meters. I think people should pay for the electricity use, especially when they live there pretty much year-round. But I do think it's got to be metered.
I agree on the metered part as well, but I know this might be maybe overstepping. I'm not sure. But you guys say you pay $38 a month. Does anybody, can anybody show us, like, your bill? Is there a...
What's in the past?
Yeah, so what you have paid in the past, so that we can get an idea of that? While we're getting, you know, waiting to try to get meters, maybe we can, there's a compromise that can be made from zero to something. You know, that would be, that would work until we can do what we need to do to make it, you know, all right above, you know, for everybody. But, you know, several of you said you pay less elsewhere. So if I'm sure... Okay, that would be awesome if you could bring them in and maybe...
That would help.
I wasn't paying $100 a month.
Right. Right, right. That's what I'm asking, if you could do that and maybe bring it to Garth, and Garth could see it and give us some idea, because we have to go from zero to something, because the town just can't keep, you know, doing that. But thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other?
I guess the committee, and I'm not clear on this. Somebody said something about Bridge Marina, $2,200 versus something else. But you all did look at local marinas and see what they're paying.
Yep.
And we're comparing. We're close.
I know they're metered there, aren't they, on the electric?
No, I'm not talking about the...
Not talking about the slip rates.
Yeah, we're in line on that.
You're in line, okay.
Yep.
Well, I definitely think that we ought to meter these things. It's not right to... I mean, how you know who owes $100 who owns $50, you know?
Right.
That's all I have to say.
All right. So motion's been made and seconded?
Second.
No other?
No.
No other public, no other comment? Let's have a vote. Marjorie?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sandy?
Yes.
Motion passes without electric charges. All right. What's that? Hey, you know, this is, this is how the sausage is made.
I think that's the first that we've gotten a round of applause.
You know?
That's what we want to hear.
Yeah, maybe that, maybe that little article can come off of what's happening in Urbana, Mr. Monk.
All right.
I'll take it.
Now we're on to the easy one, the proposed fiscal year '23...
Yeah, thank you. We don't want to look bad when we try to do the right.
All right. The budget, the basic categories are in the packet. You will notice that, just as a reminder, the annual budget is money we expect to have come in and how we expect to spend it. It's a living document in that there's things that we can't predict and windfalls we can't predict. And so amendments have to be made over time, but it is our best guess based on what we have spent in the past as to what we think we're going to spend in the future. Because we used money from the Tabor Fund to set aside for the purpose of building a new pool, you will notice that in the general fund, the total expenses are about $30,200 less than the general revenue for the general fund. And that's because the council agreed to let the money we normally took from the Tabor Fund to build, to repay itself. And in doing that, the monies that are normally expended or paid for by funds from the Tabor Fund are going to be paid for out of the general fund. And so they are reflected in the budget later as expenses, but not as expenses in the general fund. I don't know if that makes sense to everybody, but the bottom line is, on the first page, you can see it's, the total general fund expenses is $580,367, and the total general fund revenue is $610,567, and that's a $30,200 difference, where we've got an overage there, and that is made up for by expenses that are normally tagged as Tabor Fund expenses later in the budget that are being paid out of those general fund revenues. So I think that horse is dead. I'll move on. Water fund expenditures, you can see what those are. The well construction of $1,056,000, that's the big number there. That's not actually created by your fees. That's the loan we're getting to pay for the new well, and that is balanced on the expenses as well. As you can see, loan proceeds on the page two. Tabor Fund, if you look at that, expenditures of the Tabor Fund are on there as an item. That's the $30,200 I was talking about. Revenues are zero because that's where that money was coming from out of the general fund. Upton's Point Marina, that anticipated expenditures is $60,350. And to go to Ms. Nordstrom's Point, the other side is $60,350, and that's because those are things that we're counting on being expenditures and counting on being income. But with nice people like you staying at the Marina, it may be that we're going to end up with $80,000, in which case we'll make some money and we can put in floating docks or metered electricity. Moving on, DMV Select, we have anticipated expenses. We're hoping that we're going to become closer to matching that, but we have been running a shortfall on that and anticipate, we were given that two years, knowing that it was here as a benefit to the town and to bring people into the town and that it would be a loss leader for some period of time and hope that at some point it breaks even or even makes us a little money, but it wasn't its main purpose. Roy, did you have any other things that you wanted? There are specifics, if you want to go through the nitty-gritty, that are available.
Is on this list, on Upton's Marina, we talk about the rate increase for the slips, and we're striking the slip usage electric charge that's on this. It's not going to make a substantial change in what the revenues are.
Right.
So it's...
And this budget includes a 5% increase for the main staff, Mr. Wheeler and Mr. Kime, because they get so much gratification out of their employment and their love of Urbana have agreed to not take the increases in their salaries. And the town and the council appreciate their dedication.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And with that, does anyone have any public comment on the budget? Do we have a sheet? No public comment? Anyone? All right.
Close the hearing.
Hearing, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion for an acceptance of the proposed budget?
We don't need a motion, not till July.
Don't need a motion? Oh, no, we can't vote on it now?
Right.
Okay. Public hearing?
It's seven days.
Yes.
Yep. We will, we will vote to approve it at the, at the town council meeting.
Right.
All right.
And we can have a discussion.
Next item are the minutes from April 27.
No.
No.
Okay, yeah, okay. So we have the minutes from the April 13 work session. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from April 13? Beth, why don't you do this one?
I want to make a motion. You approve the minutes from the April 13 meeting?
As presented.
Do I have a second?
I'm not used to having the opportunity.
Well, I need, I needed somebody else to step. Marjorie's, you know, getting worn out down there.
She's got it going.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes?
Nope.
Sandy?
Sandy.
So we'll start with Sandy on the vote. Sandy?
Yes.
I say yes. Larry?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Marjorie?
I'm not sure. Yes.
You didn't make the motion.
No, I'm not sure what to do now.
Okay, okay.
I'm a little lost.
All right.
Perhaps now go to items eight, nine, and 10, now that I think we're done with action.
I got to get back to...
General public comment, and then responses, and then matters of the town council.
All right.
I thought we were done with that.
We did all those, yes. So now we open for public comment. Do we have any public comments on anything in general?
No one signed up.
No one signed up? All right.
Closed.
No need for a response, so we'll close public comment. Matters of council. Garth, is it over to you? You got nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Roy?
None of us got nothing.
I'm over here.
Okay, all right.
I got something to tell you. No, I'll tell you later at 12.
Well, I do have an announcement since we moved...
We're not on announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Marjorie.
You're welcome. Sorry, I'm just trying to keep you in line.
All right. We did the minutes. We did the minutes. No matters of council, now we'll do announcements. Yeah, it is.
I do have matters with council.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I attended the boundary line adjustment, line adjustment meeting the other day. And as I was sitting there thinking, we have got to be proactive in trying to get grants. We've got to, we've got to put a fire under somebody to do it.
Who's the one who put the fire under?
Well, what I would like to do is to have instruct staff to go out and talk to Anne Marie Regardi. Rigardi, who is the Assistant County Administrator, who is getting grants like crazy from Middlesex County, and see if she can't help us in some manner. And I don't think we need to vote on it, but I think we need to instruct staff to go out there and talk to her. And we did something similar before when we went out and we talked to the treasurer when I brought...